...City Council Joint Regular Committee Meeting, Thursday, July 20th at 6:00 PM. Public participation, is there any public participation? No? Okay. Order of committed business, Service Committee will start at 6 o'clock as well. It's water line rules and ordinances. It was referred to the Service Committee. It's extension procedures for water lines, 914.01. Who would like to speak first to this? Mr. Wagner or ...?
Well, I think I'd rather refer to Lynn first.
Okay.
As we have a request to use a water line.
Sure. And the soapbox can be as long as you like.
Order suffer.
Name and address.
Lynn McKeever, 930 South Walnut. Engineer McKeever and Associates. Thank you, members of the council administration. Basically, we've had some discussions in the past on water line extensions outside the city limits. I both have had issues dealing with the county commissioners, I'm their county sanitary engineer, and oversee their water as well as wastewater plants. And also represent some developers who desire to have services outside the city limits. And discussing the best alternative to get those services. As far as the county goes, we have a, the county commissioners have a contract with the City of the SARS for up to 250,000 gallons a day, which is fine, and that covers our line going to North Robinson and anywhere else that we would deem necessary to run that and then connect to the city system, all in accordance with your own rules and regulations, and we pay the fees that we've agreed to and so forth. That's fine. In looking at this from a broader picture, it's my opinion that it would be more beneficial for the city to expand their service area outside the current city limits in lieu of having, you know, the county grow their department, which I'm the head up. One of the reasons is everywhere that the county system would have to connect to the city system, we will be required to have a backflow device and a master water meter that we would pay for the water usage based on those readings, just like we do presently at, on the east side of town with the line going to North Robinson. Based on the size of the service and where we're at, those could be $50,000 each. And I would prefer to see that $50,000 for the pipelines in lieu of metering devices and so forth. But in order for that to happen, that water line would have to be under the city's control, not the county's, because as a county provider of water, we are a satellite water distribution system under EPA's criteria, which says that we've got to jump through hoops, we have to do some of the same testing that you guys do. And it, and with your water, and we don't touch the water that gets sent to us, it's all coming from your system. And if that was your water line, you wouldn't have to do that additional testing. So you would just fit into your normal market area and the testing for your service area. So that's, you know, that's the good thing about that, and it would be simpler. The other situation that I would like to bring your attention is, there's an ordinance you have where basically if you have a fire hydrant inside the city, it has to be serviced by an eight-inch watering. That ordinance has been in there as long as I can remember, back in, to the 80s when I worked for you. The EPA has a criteria of a minimum with a fire hydrant being six inches in diameter. One of the reasons you, the city implemented the eight-inch at that time was your pressure. Prior to, when that ordinance was written, your water towers were 23 feet lower in elevation. In the 80s, the two new water towers were built, and they were elevated 23.1 feet basically to get 10 pounds pressure more up into the air. So now you have more pressure in your distribution system, which increases flows. A second reason to consider smaller distribution system is a, you treat for bacteria with chlorine. Chlorine reacts with the organics in your water system, and that's common with all surface water systems, which you are. If the longer the water lays in the distribution system, we call it aging, basically, it's common sense. Big pipes, little tubes, they lay their flow. That trihalomethanes and halocyanocacins, those numbers rise. And as a cancer-causing agent, we have a limitation of how high those can go before we have to do something else with treatment in the systems. It's becoming a major issue in a lot of communities who are bumping up against the upper thresholds of those. I'm happy to say your new plant has an additional treatment that's going to help lower that, which will be better. But that's just another issue, and we actually do modeling on distribution systems and put the demands in and do all our fancy gyrations in the computer, and it comes out color coding our water lines based on the age and the potential risk that we have in the water distribution system. So, you know, all those things come into play. And then also, right now is, if we have to extend those lines and the sizes outside the city limits, the idea is to design the diameter based on the need, projected needs and long-range needs, and not fire protection. They'll be serviced by the township fire departments outside. They're all set up with mutual aids and tankers and portable reservoirs and... With that, then we can use a lot of smaller lines. You'll see the rural water people, three-inch lines, four-inch lines, six-inch lines interconnected between villages. I know Delco's got about one of the bigger ones between Edison, and I think coming north, Iveria is a six-inch line, for instance. And it supplies those type of needs. I've done some calculations, and if, in a pipe drain, if you wanted to send water to Nevada, a six-inch line would suffice supplying the whole town of Nevada, and you could pick up Osceola and Foxfire Campgrounds along the way. Obviously, it's still expensive getting there, but if we were designed based on human consumption instead of the fire protection for those lines, it would be beneficial. I know communities have, I'm just held out for the annexation to get those services. And you'll find in Cardiff, then they're now surrounded by Delco water, so there's no chance for it to grow that service. So you have rural water, I believe at Akari Road, north on Route 4, it came to Tyro. You have rural water on State Route 98 to south of the county line. You have rural water south of Gallion. It's actually just in the north side of B. Morrow County there, just south of Gallion. So they are, there are alternatives when they decide to come, and they'll run 60 miles or 120 miles a line to pick up those service areas, like Northern Rural Water did with New Washington. They brought their water down from Sandusky to get there, and they went around Attica, and now they're servicing Chatfield, New Washington, Tyro. So, and a lot of that area, Yorba Reservoir was actually built to provide the raw water capacity for that northeast part of the county. We don't need it now, Lynn, because they're bringing it in from Lake Erie. So that's some of the history that we had, and we could pick up more customers. I believe, last I was told a few years ago, that you've lost over 400 water customers due to the economy. At 30 bucks a customer, that's $144,000 a year less income to your water system. Being one of the people who helped pay for that, I would love to see another 100 people or be available to help divvy up the load. And typically, if you maintain your one and a half on the multiplier for the utility bill, that would be fine, I mean, they're going to pay one and a half for the same gallon of water that I pay one. You know, so they're actually, would help out. And I just know that there are, from talking with people in the surrounding perimeter of the immediate city here, that there are people very interested in obtaining your services. And, you know, the Mount Zion Road area, they've got problems. You could go out to where 19 and 100 divide off, out to that area, Crestline Road. The people up Stetzer Road, there are some really nice homes up there, and they're using pond water for treatment, or treating it to drink it. So, you know, it's a need out there, and we're going to have more of a need, hopefully, within a year going northwest. And I know it's the, there at 19 Quaints Road, or it's not Quaints.
Quaker.
Quaker Road, yeah, thank you. In that area, we're working with the local industrial, commercial industry to put some facilities in, and it would be beneficial to have water there, and you would have a large enough purchaser to make a worth a lap, that type of thing. And I know the commissioners are looking at ways to see if they can make that, help make that happen. So, you know, that's why I'm here today, is would you consider it? If you would, can we work out something that makes it economical to extend it without big lines and fire hydrants? Questions?
So, water line, like you said, maybe as far as Nevada. It would be strictly just drinking water, it would be for a hydrant use at all? I mean, everyone I'm saying, what I'm getting at, it would be six-inch thin, you suspect?
If we put a six-inch line to Nevada, or stop at Osceola, let's keep it there, that you could have a fire hydrant. Now typically, if you see the Winford Water Line, when that was put in, we, that was a 12-inch line, because they wanted it for the fire protection after they had the fire. So it was designed to meet that criteria, they can have 1,000 gallons a minute out of that fire hydrant. And we only put fire hydrants going out on top of the hills to bleed off the air, because if you have a hump in your line, you need to get the air out, or the pumps won't be able to push the water through. It's one of the things that, I don't understand, but everybody tells me that's the way it is. And you'll lose your pumping capacity and loss of flows if you don't bleed off the air pockets in your lines. I guess a little bit like a vapor lock in a carburetor type of deal. So we would not need them. It would probably be good if we had a six-inch to have some strategically placed. But then we have to have an understanding of what they can draw on it. And we worked this out, there's fire hydrants in the parking lot of Colonel Crawford, and Jefferson Township comes in, and they'll fill up if they need some water. And then they record it and are to submit it to the county commissioner, so we can log that water usage. They're not charged for the fire usage, but we still have to account for it. We want to know it wasn't lost and leaked somewhere, it was actually put. As long as we can account for it, I'm okay with it. But we need to be accountable for those water losses. So, smaller than a six-inch, there'll be no fire hydrants on them, but you can put flush hydrants at that point. And you'll see that on some of the rural waters, it's, they glorified yard hydrants, they got maybe an inch and a half nozzle on them, they come up, and it looks like a little fire button. And that's what those are, so they can create enough velocity to flush the lines out, to clean them periodically. So that's what we would do on something smaller, because not everywhere would you want a six-inch line running. You may only need a three or a four, or a two, actually, a two-inch line can handle 20-some people and homes, if you don't have to go too far.
So you could, six-inch would be the main, or would be like 12 inches currently to even North Robinson as a 12-inch?
Partway, it stops short of Partridge Road, and is an eight-inch the rest of the way. So, and there's, we actually have an issue with too much storage in that line, and I lose my chlorine residuals. We've had to lower the elevation in the water towers, and that's what a lot of people have done to try to get more turnover, and we're no different. We've got it a third full. Yeah?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If we're talking taking the water out there, we, and the cost of the lines to go out, are there any grants, anything available for us to apply for in order to do that? Could we do it internally, would we have to? I believe the one that went out to Colonel Crawford, on North Robinson, my company came in and did that one, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, a contractor, yeah.
A contractor come in and did it, okay. But now, how are we talking about, if you're thinking of this, so in the big picture, paying for it would be up to us to pay for this to go out there?
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that, okay.
We would, first of all, the main thing is, if you're receptive to the idea, then it would be up to us to try to figure out how to make that happen. That's base two, but we're not going to apply for anything or waste effort if we don't have the blessing of the city first that says, yeah, we'll let it happen, but we're not committing anything to it yet. You could, if you had the fund, you could take the charge and do all that. There are funds available, but they're competitive. You could do, well, actually, OPWC, that you were using on other projects. So if you use it for that project, you're going to take it away from this hand. You can get loans for that. With the county system, the people are paying an assessment on top of the 30-plus dollars a month that they pay for water usage. Basically, it's a penny a gallon to them, is what I keep telling them. They're paying a $28 a month assessment on top of their $30 water usage, $30 to $45 water usage, to retire the debt on that water line going out to North Robinson. And it gets retired in 2019, so, and it was done in 96. So, but the people, the new customers, nobody comes on as long as their well produces water. But when they're well-quit, they're glad to have us next door to them, and then they hooked up. We've picked up about 12 customers in the last couple of years because of issues with their own wells. And then they hooked up, because it's cost-effective compared to drilling a new well today, so...
So currently, we're bound to this 250,000 gallons for, that goes to North Robinson. Okay, our new water plant's 3 million gallons. We use around, what is it, 800,000, 900,000? We use about 800,000, 900,000, so there is capacity there with the new water plant in order to be able to handle that.
Right.
And the, one other point is, I think we discussed this at one time, with the new plant was originally planned, we know we have a billion gallons sitting out there at Offway. And the plan for the new plant, and they've been, over the construction time, they keep pointing out to me is, you know, if you want to increase the size of your plant, this wall right here just gets shoved out, and we can put it, put new equipment in here in order to increase your capacity. So that was something that was built into the plan. Roger insisted on that, looking forward, that we would have the ability to handle it if we could become a supplier of water to a better, bigger part of the county.
Yeah, we had discussed that, I was fortunate to be asked by Roger to sit on that one committee. And we were wondering how big to have it, they'd actually talked about bigger. But, and we brought up that a typical factory uses between five and 10 gallons per employee. So if it was 10 gallons a employee, and you brought 1,000 new jobs into town, that's 10,000 gallons. So that's a 10 gallon a minute water leak, which you probably have a couple that you could find and get that capacity back. And if you had those thousand jobs, need 1,000 new homes, that's 200,000 gallons of water a day. So you can very easily grow the system. If I was projecting, I did some projections, I know right now Nevada uses around 45,000 gallons of water a day. So Osceola would be a fraction of that. So it's not like you're putting a burden on your plant capacity or your reservoir storage. And like I said, that reservoir was used with state monies to have capacity to service the region, the regional reservoirs at that time. So, yeah, you could very easily provide the service, it's all the other issues, and, you know, and we do understand that, you know, I don't particularly want to pay to have 20 miles of water line run. I'm paying for this, you know, and I've sat on that side of establishing rate structures and so forth, and justifying it to the residents of the community, and it's difficult. So you've got to be fair, but I think, you know, like I said, we are charging $28 a month through the county system, just through a debt, a capital improvements debt. And I think you put $7.5 on my bill for a debt and service, and, you know, we understand that it's necessary, and it needs to be done. We don't have a choice. And I don't think we can really count on grants forever, they're disappearing. I remember when we had federal revenue sharing, and that disappeared, and it created a burden. And luckily, the administration at that time didn't have it tied into a bunch of salaries. It was all for buying garbage trucks and stuff like that, so it didn't affect them. Like some communities, they had to lay off the people when, because they were funded, their payroll by that.
Metering.
Yep.
You mentioned about metering. That's, that's, that's down the road, and, and that's so much the topic of conversation now.
But I can address that pretty, the system the county has, we are compatible. Not directly, I can't take your meter reader out and do that, but we can read the meters and convert and run through your building package, it's that way. And you would want that, we have all radio reads in the county, and if you're going out in county, that's what you want. You're not walking to those places, and you're not pulling into driveways and parking. We went from over seven and a half hours it would take to read to less than an hour now. And actually, the capabilities are there today, that with a tower, you could have the ladies in the office read all the meters. And some of them have assistance set up where they come in, and your meters, with the new digital meters, will tell you if there's a leak in the system. So it could actually, if they hit the go button at 8 o'clock, and it'll ping a couple, and you'll have some red alarms go off, you can actually call those people and say, hey, check, you've got a water leak or something. Or was there something going on, you know? High usage, did you fill up your pool, or something like that? And that capability is there, there's companies that have that, I know, do mobile home parks. And they're in Springfield, and they're reading parks all over the place. They got a motive that ties into a tower at remote locations, and they just call up a reader. Yeah, so you can, you can cut, you know, that, make that as efficient as possible, and that's what we did with the county. We switched all the meters over, got them all to radio reads, got them all accurate, upgraded, all the commercial meters. Our line losses went down 10% in the system because of the accurate readings. And then now we have two part-time people overseeing the operations for the commissioners. And it's easy to grow it, but I wanted to present this because you guys have set up for it. And we don't necessarily need to hire a crew and a backup, build a building and so forth to do that.
Another question, about a tower, would we have to add more towers?
At this point, going west, I say no, because it's all downhill. There's, what was it, 100-foot or better fall going, if you went all the way to Nevada. The creeks and all go west into Mindette County. So that's to your advantage, and I do not anticipate the need for that six-inch and 100,000 gallons being used west. I think you can supply it right off your own towers. You won't go, the biggest issue that you have is the Continental Divide going through the city. And there is a treaty with the Canadian government in the US on no net loss of water to the Great Lakes. So if you have, we really wouldn't go too far south. I mean, I don't think you'd go to the net with water, because you're pulling Sandusky water and putting it into the Ohio water, unless you get a permission slip from the director of the Department of Natural Resources. Crestline has such a permit, and in their case, their water system, their well is in Ontario, south of, east of 314, south of the old Lincoln Highway. And then they pump, that's in the, I'm going to say a higher river watershed. And they pump it over the hill, from their Goodwell Field they got there, to their plant, which is on the north side of the old Lincoln Highway, and then they pump it all the way back to Crestline. And we have right now, Crestline and Gallion got together, because Gallion's actually goes to the hill in Tangi, and Crestline City is in the Sandusky River. But we have their two water systems interconnected with a valve, such that if there was a disaster at either one's plant, we could, you know, they could shut their plant down and open the valve, and the other municipality could feed it water. So we have that, so no gallon jugs on the square with a tanker truck. This town had that once, so... But you just have to address those, but I can't believe anybody would be too upset with it.
Bill? Lynn, I've got several questions. Have any studied where you want to run us the number of customers that may take advantage of it?
Not yet, because we don't know if we can do it. I have personally went to all the surrounding township trustees' meetings and let them know that there would be discussions on this, and that there may be letters sent to their residents. And I wanted them to hear it from me first, before the residents called them. But other than my personal conversations with some, I have no numbers, because we didn't want to waste the effort if we couldn't do it.
About projected hookup fees?
All to be determined.
Because I remember years ago, they wanted to run it out to Sulphur. And it was 1,200 bucks back then, and people had...
We cannot mandate that they hook up to water. And I think that was a fallacy, some of that, that they were telling them they had to. And for $1,200, personally, that's cheap. You will pay several thousand dollars in other communities, rural water. I've had to pay up to $17,000 for a two-inch tap, not me and my client. I have seen my client pay a $40,000 connection fee to another community for a whole home. So, Licking County charged a million dollars to connect to a sanitary sewer.
I just sort of get to sit here and think that, yeah, we're going to run it to Nevada, we're going to run it to Sulphur, we're going to do this and that. Well, some people will be paying for it, and some aren't, it'll be us.
I'm not saying that at all, you don't have to do that. But if you aren't willing to at least consider it, where we know that if we can make step two, three, and four happen, then we're not going out there if we don't have water first. So that, that's where I'm coming from on our end, that it takes a lot of effort, and it'll take a few years to make something happen, but it starts here. And you have the big body of water, and we're asking, would you let that go out that way? And then we can look at alternatives to making it happen. And then we can look at alternatives to making it happen. And I don't, we're not spending a million dollars running a water line somewhere for two customers. That won't happen. I mean, that's, that can't happen. So you need that initial sign-up to make it doable.
Do you have a water system now?
Pardon me?
Nevada?
Oh, yeah. I just throw that, I've approached them, I used to run their water system and it's twenty years. And I did go to them and told them we were discussing it because they're gonna have to do some upgrades and they might not even want it. I know we've talked with the commissioners of Oceola needing it. They have several dug wells in that village and those are basically not acceptable today. And, but there's no alternative for them really yet. We're looking at getting septic systems in there because EPA was on, they were on the radar. And so we've gotten three hundred thousand and another ninety-three thousand to put new septic systems in for the people of Nevada, I mean, Oceola, excuse me. But I'm thinking in short term, the smaller, I know we have a customer west of Winford that wants water. I know you've got half a dozen or so customers at Mount Zion Road that want water immediately now, because I've talked to them when I was discussing the county system. But like I said, I don't want to put water meters and master meters and all that everywhere. And I thought it would be better if basically each of our cities stake out their turf, so to speak, and what they could efficiently service and are willing to service and commit to. And then we go from there.
It'd be definitely my way to grow, be a compliment to the city of Visserus. Which way, I'm sorry, which way on Mount Zion, west or east?
Well, down to Mount Zion around four.
Oh.
And then you could go some to the west, some to the east. You could actually end up looping around, pick the homes up on ninety-eight. You could go over and tie to West Stone Street and into that last, you know, those dead ends. You've got, coming off of Beale Avenue and Hopley, you've got a bunch of homes between there and where one hundred goes south. Yeah. And like I said, it's a slow, long-term process. And you've got to find a way to afford it, to make it happen before it gets put in the ground. It's not you build it, they will come, but, you know, it's just something considered. But one way to make that happen is also to reduce that size of the pipe to domestic consumption standards and not the fire standards. And I don't want to have the fire chief upset. What we typically try to do now...
He's sitting over his shoulder.
Okay. I felt a knife. The, is, in other communities, we sit with the fire chief, the water department, the administration, the finance, to explain all sides and what you have to have, what you need to do this and then, so everybody's on the same page. And we don't want people out there, wow, I could've done this, but they went this route. And understand the whole process.
How many years would, how many years you think would take before we could get, about two years before we could get any actual projects started if we go that way?
I would say that's realistic, Mark. If based on the funding that's used, sometimes some of these projects take four years, five years. You can typically get loan money.
Tomorrow?
For projects if they're ready to go, but you gotta pay it back. And until you have that avenue to pay it back figured out, you don't go borrowing.
So does the fire department say anything on the size of the water lines? Does the insurance companies come in to play when you reduce the size down from a six inch to a four inch or a two inch? I mean, is the fire chief then the integral part on when it comes to the values of homes and all?
Inside the city limits where you provide the full-time fire protection, if you get your ISO ratings, I know that the better, the bigger the pipes and the bigger the trucks and the more manpower you have, the better those numbers are, the ISO numbers. I still haven't seen, nobody would ever give me a number as to what percentage that saves me on my home insurance. And so I really don't know that. But if we go outside the city limits where it's already serviced by volunteer fire departments, it will be no change on their insurance. And actually, the values of the home typically would go up because of the water being available.
Any other questions?
I've got a question, probably not for Lynn, but it's on the water lines and Jeff probably knows, as I asked him earlier about it. So if we, I guess what I'm thinking is we want to supply people outside the city limits. We've got people in the city limits that still want water. Jeff, you know what I'm talking about?
Well, yeah, and that's one of the reasons this has came about, because we have a couple of different requests. I mean, we got Visserus tired and we now are under the railroad tracks on ninety-eight and we're with a hydrant right there where we got four or five people that would like to tie in and he might have another potential business that wants to buy some land off a ham and they'll want water. So according to right now, inside the city limits, they're all required to partake in putting that water line in and paying for it and then paying for the tap. And then we have another request outside the city limits that would like a water line. So I don't know how much parameters we have outside the city limits and they don't need the hydrants, but there actually comes a point in time where we're gonna have to invest a little bit of our time and labor and money to get more customers. So I guess the question is, is it always gonna fall on, according to these ordinances, always on the people that want it and gotta pay for it? It's for discussion, I guess. So right now, if Visserus tired wants water, then he's responsible to bathe from the hydrant all the way to the edge of his property line. That's a pretty good investment for one person.
And it's the far edge of his property.
Right.
It's not just to the edge, it's to the far...
Far edge, at the edge of his property line. So that, you know, that's gonna restrict some people to say, well, I can't afford to do that. Now, can we afford to do it? Probably not, but like Lynn said, we've got to increase our customer base somehow, some way. So I think it's discussion we need to have and try to put a plan together, how do we do that financially and affordably?
Any other questions? Is there someone that can go through this, proposed changes that are in, that are being proposed in the ordinance that went bearing and walks through it?
Yeah, I guess I can do that. I didn't, I worked, helped in distracting this, but Lynn, real quick, on the eight-inch line requirement?
Mm-hmm.
Where does that come from? Does that come from the fire code thing that requires the eight inches for the hydrants? Or is that somewhere else?
That was the city ordinance. And you're not alone in that. The Galleon's got it in there as too. But that's where I'm saying, it was deemed at that time, we needed all eights and twelves and we had a bunch of spaghetti lines, I'll call them, at that period of time. But in, we have done some analysis and in the residential subdivisions, a six-inch line, in my opinion, is okay.
But I guess my question though is, the only place I find that it requires the eight-inch line is in the fire code section that says to tie into a hydrant, it has to be an eight-inch line.
Right. If it's a hydrant, if you have a hydrant, you have to service it with an eight-inch line.
So you could run four inch, three inch, two inch, six inch anywhere else without putting a fire hydrant on it. Okay, but, sorry, I guess the question is, what, where, if no hydrant is gonna be used, is there something still that requires it to be an eight-inch line?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, not, because that's, that was confusing me. Okay. Right. Sorry. Back to you.
No, I think you're fine.
Yeah, we kind of went through and we made some revisions in here.
The package in here that has the red?
Yeah. This is, I, there's two packages in front of you and I gave you all the pertinent sections of chapter nine that apply to water lines, nine thirteen, nine fourteen, and nine fifty-one. And chapter nine involves all of our different service things. Nine fourteen is the expansion procedures that are currently in place and it essentially assesses the cost to the property owner. It does have a provision in subsection E for the property owner that incurs those costs, or developer, whoever, that incurs those costs to recover some of those costs from other people that paid high end over a period of ten years, but it gets all complicated. What it prohibits the city from doing, however, is running some lines at its cost to get closer or to make it more available for people to expand into. If there's a neighborhood of, as Lynn was saying, a single business or maybe a neighborhood of ten or twelve to fifteen homes, but it's kind of a far way away, the city, the city can't bear any of that cost upfront. It's gotta be paid upfront by the property owner. So what we did in here was made a couple of changes. There are two things that's not in red that need to be changed in there, but basically in nine fourteen oh one A, we added some language to the end. The statute already allowed for the city to incur the cost and burden of doing some extensions if the city believed that it was necessary for water circulation or fire protection or to maintain service to a city-owned property. We just simply added in, and the word for is missing between necessary and potential, or are necessary for potential expansion of city services. So if the city would determine that potential for expansion of city services would warrant building some line, it has that leeway in it. In B one below, there is the eight-inch word there and we could change that to six. I defer to Lynn, if he thinks that should be eight or six. Essentially, what B one is saying there is if the developer runs a line and the city requires that developer, because at our determination, we believe that line has to be bigger than eight inches, then we'll bear the burden of the cost between the six or eight and whatever we are requiring. If we wanted, we could reduce that to six. B two is, and that is for lines within the city. B two is, we've done some, that's when we've done most of the modification. Again, it did originally have the eight-inch language in it and we changed that to basically indicate that the required line would be based on what the developer and the city engineer determine is the necessary sized line. So the new language reads that if the city is gonna require a line bigger than what the developer and the engineer determine is necessary for their service, then we would bear the difference of that. The example here would be if a user a hundred, a hundred yards down the road, just for him wants a two-inch line, that's all he needs and the engineer determine all he needs is a two-inch line. But from a city, we look at it, well, a hundred yards past him is a whole subdivision, so we want you to run a six-inch line, we would bear the cost between the difference of the two-inch line, which is all that's necessary for his project, excuse me, and the six-inch line that we're requiring because we're eyeballing what's on the other side of his development. And I think that's, you know, relatively reasonable. The cost, I'm sorry.
But somebody like Lynn would agree that wanting to be determining, even though he, I mean, even though this individual only needs a two-inch line, Lynn's recommendation would override the two-inch.
Our, yeah, whoever our city engineer is and what they tell us we would need, yeah. So if the developer just wants the two-inch line, then we mandate it six. It really should impact.
So we wouldn't be bearing the brunt then?
Only the difference, only the difference of what we want and what the developer wants. Right. Okay. Right. F, subsection F, entire costly insulation, cost of fire hydrants and all that material. Under the language currently is that the owner or developer requesting it bears all the cost. And again, so kind of matched with that B two above, except where it's determined by the city that the water gain or expansions are essential to provide adequate water circulation or fire protection, because if we have a big lump dead in, we may want to do some things like a hydrant or a flush hydrant, as Lynn was saying. Or are necessary to provide a water service to city property, which again, that's just the language that's already in it, but we're repeating it here in the cost section. Or are necessary for the potential expansion of the city services. So for example, somebody wants it a hundred meters down the road, but we want to kind of get a little bit closer because we, you know, we're eyeballing something else, it allows us to go ahead and incur some of that cost. And then the last one, it was all recognition there, any extensions beyond adjoining townships that would come back to this body to get approval to do that. Another thing that we did to make no changes to, but Mr. Rourke had asked questions about and I was just kind of looking at it, it looks like that most of these prices are maybe a decade, a decade and a half old. And these are fees for water tapping, for tapping into lines, as Mr. McKeever indicated, we gave you on the low end on some of these. That may be something at a different point in time to be able to come back and see, get some estimates as to what, what real costs are in other jurisdictions. It's not really related to what's here, but Mr. Rourke's concerned about us referring costs and not being able to keep them, this would be a place to be able to keep those from the city. Lastly, again, not red line because we hadn't completely come up with a solution, but one of the things that Mr. McKeever pointed out was, one of the things that is a burden on extending our water service sometimes is our ordinance, section nine fifty-one oh one, which mandates annexation to the city if you accept city services. There is no, no exception to that, it's whether or not council and administration don't vote to terminate service. Mr. McKeever indicated maybe with some sort of option on that, a way to opt out of that or limitations on that or something else. Again, not directly relevant to the ability to do this today, but something that long-term needs to maybe be looked at to give just more flexibility. As Mr. McKeever's pointing out, Oceola and Sulphur Springs, if they did want water, I'm pretty sure they probably don't want the annex to give it, so.
Dan?
Oh, I mean, just with the annexation, I'd go back to, well, I've been preaching this for years, you know? If you're gonna use our water, you know, obviously not Oceola, but if you're up against Visserus and you want water, then one way to get it is to come on board. But, you know, so I wouldn't be in favor of, I mean, not annexing Oceola, something like that, but if the guy down the road here, three feet out of town, wants water, then he needs to annex, so that's just my opinion. I guess it would be up to council to decide that.
Should it be for just water or should we make them annex if they have water and sewer food? I mean, how many people are using our water but didn't have a second system?
Well, that's, that is a potential option for you, that may be a low burden.
Right.
To neighboring communities, neighboring entities. There's some easy fixes and then there's some harder fixes. And that's easy.
Right, because we're not gonna run sewer lines five miles up.
Unless they pay you really well to do this.
There, you're right. Okay, so.
Typically, you would have a pump station out there and pump it back.
Right.
That's what we did. I mean, we're pumping five miles, eight miles. New Regal pumps to Fosteria, for instance. New Regal pumps to Fosteria, for instance, right now, several miles.
Right, but I'm just guessing, a water line's a little more cost-effective than sewer?
Actually, the force main on here is a six-inch, it's the same water line material as what, if you were running that size, four- to six-inch force mains, typical. You know, that's going to cost you the same as putting in that same-sized water line. You get a $200,000 pump station to push it.
So going, by going ahead and asking for a vote on these additional lines in these three different sections, will that help get the ball rolling?
Yeah, I think that solves all the immediate requests that Mr. McKeever's dealing with, as well as some of the potentialities. The things that are in the annexation section, essentially, where it assesses cost in that section A one, essentially refers back to the conditions and, oh no, I guess, this one was here now. Something that we deal with down the road, because some of this is out of date already, like A one refers to cost being borne as according to section nine thirteen oh five. Nine thirteen oh five was repealed in 2002, so, it's, it's already out of date with some other things. So, the annexation section, nine fifty-one oh one, is something you probably want to review at a subsequent time, fix some of those things, maybe make it so it specifies water and sewer, as opposed to the more broader utility, and-
Well, we might want to bring in different sections back to committee for further discussion. This is the first time anybody's heard any of this, and I think that if we, if we set up how we're going to approach this, and bring it to your committee, and do it a section by section, that we can get through it, and give everybody an opportunity to think about it for a little bit.
Yes.
Well, just say we have interest is one thing, but just say Lynn goes out and he's going to do some studies and see where, what the actual interest for the people is or not. Just say we have an interest, doesn't say we're going to do it.
Well, that's correct, except I believe there are two, there's a couple of immediate requests. One is, are within city limits, as you were saying, which would directly impact out of city residents that are essentially across the street, and two is a request for an extension that's currently pending for a business location west of town. So there are, there are two pending requests, and this is kind of, well, giving the flexibility to kind of get those things done.
But if we bring that up at the next committee meeting for those changes, we could, I mean, it's going to take us another one, two weeks to get to that point.
Yeah, these, these are, these are kind of short-term changes. There's still a couple of other things that are more longer-term that you gotta, that we'll have to come back on and bring back, the annexation section, the, the tapping fees, and the fire code stuff, which we obviously want to get input from, from fire, but where it currently requires the eight-inch lines for hydrants. There may be some places where you want an eight-inch line, like industrial parks and other areas, but if you find, so, those are, those are three things that definitely have to come back. This is something that, you know, is here, you are not, you know.
What would the committee say of going ahead and doing these proposed changes that are presented to us at the present time?
I don't have any objections. I don't have any objections, I mean, the, what's in the red.
Right, with one, with one correction, I did note in B one, where it says eight, that that could be a six, but I'll defer to Lynn on that, should it stay at eight now and later?
If we're in agreement, then that can be changed, you know, you haven't decided, I'm just up here telling you, and you trust in me, you got to do the due diligence.
So that would stay, that would stay at eight for now, so there would be no, only the changes in red?
It says, yeah, it says within municipal.
Yeah.
Why would we want to change it?
Well, only if you agree that you don't need the eight, a six would be adequate, and that's where you need the discussion with your water treatment people and the fire, to make sure they both agree that it has advantages, that you don't need a big eight, an eight-inch line doing 1,000 gallons a minute when you're fighting a house fire with 250 gallons a minute.
It would almost be more or less as a zoning requirement, that if a zone's going to be industrial, it's, you're going to want it to have this larger size, but if it's only going to be residential, we can require only the smaller size in the residential area.
And this, and this is just about a portion of your cost anyways, it's not even structural, so we can leave it at eight.
And inside of city limits, you're still going to want fire hydrants.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
I'm not saying to equip the fire hydrants inside the city, we'll put a nine.
So there would be no other recommended changes other than what's in red?
But that's on both pages, there's a change on the second page, too.
You do have two-inch lines that you're installing in this community, inside your city limits now, but their fire protection is provided from the other ends of the, the ends of the street. Nora is a two-inch water line, it may be bad now. But that's all that's there today, and that's all that's needed, and the fire hydrant sits on Rogers and East Street, so.
All right, committee.
I'll make a motion to, please, let's change.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. But, I would like to go ahead and-
We'll put together the legislation for the next meeting.
Yes.
For this, okay. And you make sure you sign that before you leave.
Yes. And I would like to go ahead and recess the service committee at six fifty-seven. All finding a board, six fifty-seven. Hopefully the only item on the agenda is the annual audit by Perry Associates, which was passed out, two people reviewed. Have they reviewed?
I reviewed, it's still on my table. I did not bring it with me.
Do you want to look at mine?
Mine. It wasn't really taken up by council.
No, it's like a repeat of last year, and there's no findings, there's no, you know, we've got our usual recommendations, and management's letter. So mainly, Perry and Associates want to know if we want to have a post-audit conference or not, that's up to you guys. I can get the paperwork signed and sent back to them.
Anybody want a post-audit conference with Perry Associates? Dan, you said yes?
What's that say?
Did you say, Dan, did you say yes?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
To have one or to not?
To not have one.
Oh, okay. Okay, so this is going to be-
I almost got you, you almost fell for it, too.
This would be your recommendation to full council, then full council will vote on it also.
Okay. Any motion?
Good luck.
All right, everybody. Mr. Plager, upset? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Will we bring this up at the next meeting, to council?
Pardon?
Full council.
Yes, it will be on the agenda right, right when we do the minutes of the final committee meeting. I'll ask for the votes for full council.
I did review, or had, did review the telephone lines that we think are going to be short, but we're still trying to figure some things out with DTE, is that right, Dan?
Yeah, we're still trying to, we got a bill from Spectrum and Time Warner that wasn't anticipated, so, the guy dealing with the DTE is having a combination this week, so he's supposed to be back any Monday.
I have, you know, two appropriations that we'll need, but it can probably wait until we know what's going on with the rest of this, so I'll just say we'll table that for now, instead of doing legislation for this, and then have it come back for more. I think we can get by on one more bill in these two places.
Okay, nothing further, we'll recess at seven o'clock. Any public participation? Mr. Jordan, Jordan, regular committee? Mr. Sack, send to Mr. Keever. All in favor?
Aye.
During seven o'clock. Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Lynn. Okay, we are, we have to have a special council meeting. It's called for six thirty, we're running a little late, and we'll make a note that it actually began at seven oh one PM, okay? Okay, I call it, order the special meeting to Busiris City Council for July the twentieth, 2017. The meeting is called by Mayor Resert, and it is to, I'm trying to hear, go and have an executive session regarding one twenty-one point twenty-two G one, which is personnel. Meeting is called to order, would you please stand and join me in the pleasurable reasons?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call, please.
Mitch, sir?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Trucca?
Here.
Stank?
Here.
O'Rourke?
Here.
Piper?
Here.
We need to appoint Kelly Tullis, our interim clerk for this meeting.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Mr. Trucca, to appoint Kelly Tullis, the interim clerk for the meeting, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Does anyone want to address council this evening? No one? Mr. Ratliff?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to request an executive session with the city council for the purpose of considering personnel management for Ohio revised code, section one twenty-one point two-two, subsection G one.
Do I hear a motion?
I move at this time that city council adjourns an executive session with all available elected officers of the Busiris City Administration and Service Safety Directors available, for the purpose of conducting a conference with law director Rob Ratliff and city Busiris per Ohio revised code personnel. Consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing per Ohio revised code, section one twenty-one point two-two G one.
Okay, I have a motion that, that at this time, the city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Busiris City Administration and the Service Safety Directors available, for the purpose of conducting a conference with law director Rob Ratliff and city Busiris per Ohio revised code personnel, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing per Ohio revised code, section one twenty-one point twenty-two G one. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Stank?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Okay, motion, hearing. No formal action or vote may be taken in an executive session, only discussion of the subject with the executive session was called for. So we need to enter our executive session at seven oh four PM, and we're going to have to ask everyone to leave, please. Please remove all of your recording equipment from the room. We got everybody back in here. I need a motion to adjourn the executive session. Roll call vote, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Stank?
Yes.
Okay, the motion, hearing, we adjourn the executive session at seven forty PM. Okay, there is no report out of the, report to be given at this time, so we'll continue with our regular meeting. Is there any old business that anyone would like to bring up this evening? Any new business anyone would like to bring up this evening?
Yeah, don't forget of the Monday at four thirty.
Monday at four thirty, we have the, yeah.
Don't forget about it.
Right, four thirty for the, yeah.
Well, see, I'm working along.
Right, public hearing for the downtown sidewalk usage, okay? We're all here this evening, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trucca, second by Mr. McKeever, to adjourn. We are adjourned at seven forty-one PM. Thank you. Has everybody signed their paperwork or?
I did.
I don't want to have to change you down.